Good call, nice meeting, order. Let's have the roll call.
Kessler?
Here.
Kanega?
Here.
Rorden?
Here.
Ewer? Binner?
Here.
Parton?
Here.
Crum?
Here.
Thompson?
Here.
Nice vacation, we're giving by Pastor John Adams at the Christian Chapel.
Love us a prayer. Dearly Father, Lord, we thank you for sending your son into this world. Lord, we thank you that you taught us how to love and what you did for us saved us, Lord. And Lord, I thank you that you left your spirit. Lord, I just pray you be here with the mayor and the council and the city officials. And Lord, just lead them into all the good things that you have for this community. And Lord, we ask this all in Jesus' name. Amen.
Pledge allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The presentation pool of minutes, eight minutes of August fourteenth, twenty seventeen. Mr. Kessler?
Make a motion to approve the minutes of August fourteenth, twelve seventeen.
Second.
Well, second, through the minutes, August fourteenth, twenty seventeen. These questions? Question?
Kessler?
Yes.
Kanega?
Yes.
Rorden?
Yes.
Binner?
Yes.
Parton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Item one says to be heard, A Central County Department. They did not make it, so we'll move on to item two. Who will like the bonds? We have nothing. Item three, introduction wardens and resolutions. Do we have nothing? Item four, notice and communication, a government body announcement. I have one, two really. First one, the mayor's youth council is now active again in the school. We are going to have a mixture at six thirty, next meeting for them. There are also some upcoming senior center events. Wednesday, the thirtieth, we have bingo at twelve thirty, which is two dollars. The Monday, September the fourth, senior center is closed, no meals on wheels. Wednesday, September sixth, garage sale bingo. Do you have a garage sale item? But don't want to have a garage sale, bring up the prize to the bingo at the senior center. Friday, September the eighth, is the birthday dinner, five thirty, followed by a senior center. That'll be interesting. Ms. Crum?
Yeah, over at the library, it's been reminded that they will be closed on Monday, September the fourth, for Labor Day. On Tuesday, the fifth, from six thirty to eight o'clock will be the next Hayesville Horticulture Club meeting. They do meet on the first Tuesday of the month. And they discuss a lot of different things. Doing with your lawns, trees, gardens, they cover a little bit of everything. The next genealogy group meeting will be Saturday, September ninth. That's in the basement of the library at two o'clock. And their next Lego club is September fourteenth, from four to six. And get together and make your Lego stuff and have them displayed in the library for a couple of weeks. That's what's going on at the library right now.
Ms. Kessler?
The park board is hosting a back-to-school movie night. It's about two and a half, three weeks from now. It's on September sixteenth, a Saturday, over at the historic district by the gazebo. It's seven thirty. Movie's gonna be Trolls, which is a pretty good movie. It's free admission, everybody. Bring your own food, bring your snacks. If you don't bring them, there will be pop, candy, water for sale. Don't forget your lawn chair or your chairs or blankets. Stuff you wanna?
Item B, flyer regarding the city of Hayesville bike contest. If you are so inclined, until September the thirtieth, you can submit an entry. Item C is a letter from Central County Department on Aging, starting a levy assessment. And item D is an email from communication on channel changes. And item E is a letter from HIBU? HIBU? Regarding delivery of phone books. And if you don't want a phone book, go to their website and you can opt out. Item Bible Business, A consideration of replat of Southampton Estates Edition. At your desk, you'll see an agreement with David Commons. And remember, we tabled this last time. And the reason we tabled it was because we needed to get an agreement with him to pay for the rest of the sewer fees that were over there, because this reduced the number of lots that had sewer fees. So we're now ready to consider the replat since we have a signed agreement with David Commons on those lots over there. Ms. Crum?
I actually had a question. Why was he requesting this? I mean, why are we losing that many over there? Does it have to do because he needs a retention pond over there? Or is there something else going on?
The original, when Mr. Hampton owned it, was so low that it was going to cost him more money to bring in dirt than he could've sold the lots for. So he sold it to David Commons so that Commons could build his own house in there. And then Commons is being able to bring up the dirt by putting in a retention pond and only using those three lots that are left.
So the retention pond is also gonna, it'll help with water control over there, but also gets him the dirt he needs to raise the other ones up?
Correct.
I hope there's no other discussion. I'm gonna make a motion to approve the agreement on the replat for Southampton Estates Third Edition.
So your motion is the replat and the agreement both?
Yes.
Okay.
So a motion, a second, to approve the replat of Southampton Estates and the agreement with David Commons? These questions?
Kessler?
Yes.
Kanega?
Yes.
Rorden?
Yes.
Binner?
Yes.
Parton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Item six, other business, A discussion of the KDHE memorandum of agreement. I don't know if you guys have taken a few hours to read down it on. Where there's nothing for us to act on, because we don't have the figures to truly finish filling that out. But we wanted to get the information to you, so if you had any questions, we could try and answer them. It'll come back to you once we have the figure put in there for approval. But this was just for discussion information for you. So if you have a question, we can have answers for you. The area and the numbers have grown considerably. The last, and I think it's in your, in there, the numbers down to two hundred and seventy-one households now that could be being connected. So the cost and the numbers have considerably increased considerably out there. Ms. Kanega?
I'm understanding that the cost is gonna be absorbed by KDHE. Am I understanding that correctly?
Yes, that's our understanding, that the total cost will be absorbed by KDHE. Extending the mains and putting in their houses, the mirrors and the design and the whole works, there's no cost to the city. Ms. Kessler?
Is there, do we have any idea yet as to whether this will affect our water supply? Will we need to upgrade our water supply? Or do we have enough capacity to have that many homes?
PEC's looking at that. They don't think to be a concern. Our well-filled out west has quite a bit of water appropriated. Only time we run into issues, when we have well issues, maintenance issues.
They're also doing testing. We still have a well that has water rights to it. And it was tested for agriculture, it's fine. They're now doing a testing for potable to make sure that well then could go online if we needed to bring that well back online also for potable water.
I noticed there's a mention in there as far as, you know, if the city decides to run mains that are not part of this, that since it's being done, if it's to our advantage, we'd be responsible for paying for it. Is there, are we planning on doing?
We don't have a plan right now to extend any mains other than what's being planned at this point. The one main that we have over in the soccer field that's already over there, this is the main that's gonna be extended anyway. So this will give us the ability to loop a lot of our mains, basically, that if we were to ever have grown to the south, that we would've had to done it. So this is gonna give us the ability for those to be paid for by somebody else. Ms. Crum?
Can you tell, where's this main gonna? I know it goes to the soccer fields right now. Does it run between Broadway and Seneca? Or where would the extension go?
Right now, to go up to Seventy-Ninth, it looks like it's gonna go to Broadway and it's gonna go down Seventy-Ninth, back to Meridian is where it was the first phase at this point.
If you look at page forty-four in the council packet, it has the engineer's kind of preliminary layout. Basically, we have a twelve-inch water main that comes out spring in Broadway. We have the twelve-inch that goes down the soccer fields and a twelve-inch that goes down Seneca. This plan that we have right here, we loop everything together twelve-inch wise. Okay. I think also because of some of the stuff that was covered by some of the news stations, which I was happy to see our local paper covered, that it's not Hayesville's water that's bad. It's the well water that's bad for people that don't have city water. And was a couple of things that were covered in that meeting that I wanna make sure people understand, that again, it's not the drinking water. If you do have a well hooked up that you use to do your lawn and your garden, that's fine. Continue to use it. It doesn't come out in the food, that's not the way. This chemical breaks down, so it doesn't do anything to your plants. Feel free to make, to water your yard and your gardens. Just might not let your kids and grandkids drink out of the hose anymore coming out of the well. But there's also one other thing I asked at the meeting, after the meeting actually was, if they had tested the cow skin, just because it's so close to where it had happened. And they said they had tested in two of the areas of the cow skin where they thought the highest concentration would be if that was gonna be an issue. And they didn't find any of the chemical in the two spots that they tested. So they felt like that the cow skin was probably not affected by this problem. So I just wanted to make sure everybody interested that too.
Ms. Kessler?
I noticed when I was reading through this that we were gonna use a little different process that was called the design-build process. Could you explain a little bit what that is as opposed to what we normally?
Basically, because of the health concerns of the area down there, design-build is contractor-selected. They get started right away. We submit like an aerial photo of where the water line should be, you know, according to the right-of-way for the county. Then PEC would be as built during the project. And those plans are submitted to KHE after the fact for approval.
So the whole thing can move along faster.
Correct. Because typically, it takes at least eight weeks for normal water plans to be approved through Bureau of Water.
As you see, it's expanded considerably from what even the meeting that we had over there. And we've already had one big meeting after that. And we'll have another one tomorrow, so KHE to keep this moving. PEC is moving very quickly on it also, so we're truly getting things moving over there. So if you have any questions, you can get Tony and Will to go with that more, because we're immediate and getting to KDHE here tomorrow. Say, no other questions? Item B is a consideration of the vacation of street. And I guess this street is named Ward Parkway. Am I correct? Since there's nothing here, Ward Parkway is over in the country. That was?
Orchard Ankers.
Orchard Ankers, excuse me, addition. It was a platted street many, many, many years ago when the addition went in, but it does not run from there over to Ward Parkway. Because then you have to run almost to the salvage yard to get to it.
Yes.
So it's not ever gonna be a true street that goes put in. So the city is, was applying to vacate that, which gives half to the homeowner and half to the park over there. So there'll never be a street over there, because it's really not needed, there's no way to get through. But we found, after the planning commission had looked at it, there is a sewer line over there. So what we need to do is return this back to the planning commission with a request for them to get an easement for the sewer line before it comes to back to us for a vacation at this point. And Rose or Will can answer additional questions if you have any there. There will actually be a motion to return back to the planning commission for getting a utility easement on the, on this land. Ms. Kessler, Rorden?
Okay, I'm, I'm sitting here trying to think. Now, this is from, this is like from where the basketball goals installed, from there over to the salvage, is that? Okay.
There's a, there's a platted street in there called Ward Parkway.
Right.
That never did get put in and never will get put in, because it doesn't go anywhere.
Right. Oh, well, I'm just clarifying, because I was trying to figure out where.
That's where it is right there.
For the basketball.
Just to the, not too far from basketball courts. In fact, it's really the first buildable lot is what it is, I think.
If you start at the basketball course and go to the east, it's the first lot that has a home on it?
It's the first homeowner lot is where, that's where it is right there. Ms. Crum?
I'll make a motion that we send the consideration of the vacation of Ward Parkway Street back to planning commission so they can look at what sort of utility easements may need to go in place.
Second.
Well, second, return back to the planning commission as presented. Discussion? Question?
Kessler?
Yes.
Kanega?
Yes.
Rorden?
Yes.
Binner?
Yes.
Parton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Item C, discussion regarding joining Derby in a lawsuit. There's nothing in there if we want to explain it to you. And it doesn't take council action at this point, because the amount is only four thousand dollars. So it can be just done by administration part of it. But Derby found out here several months ago, or a year or two ago, that the way that the sales tax being distributed on the comp use.
Compensating use tax?
Compensating use, which really is vehicles, is what it amounts. When someone buys a vehicle somewhere, we get our part of the sales tax coming to us. And since we have a one-cent sales tax, they were supposed to be sending the one cent to us. The way the software has been designed, the legislature sends the money to the county, but they don't break it out. So that we've only been getting a half cent instead of one full cent of the income of the sales tax on museums. This has been going on for quite a while. The amount of money we've lost, we have no idea how much we've lost. Derby now has, is basically suing the legislature and has gone to this. They've asked, ordered in us to come in with them because of the amount of money that everyone is losing off of this. It's gone to the, which, one of the boards and got turned down, which pushed it all the way to the lawsuit. I don't remember which board that they've taken it to, but this will, will go better. I think Derby shows if there's more cities, the amount of money that we're all losing out there.
I heard Valley Center was also looking.
Oh, they're also looking, okay. Because if you're a city in Central County, you truly are, and you have a, and you have a city sales tax. You are not getting your full city sales tax from the way the legislature is distributing money. Ms. Crum?
I would say that our citizens approve that sent sales tax, and we owe it to them to join this lawsuit, make sure that we're getting all their money back here where it's supposed to come.
Yeah. Yeah, truly, you would think, I guess, it's too expensive for a changeers operator, I don't know. But anyway, they wouldn't do it. That's the more discretion to you, but we'll just do it administratively. But that, we'll move on. And then you do the consideration agreement with API for the senior center meal program.
This is the same group that we're working with now to provide meals at the senior center. And this is a renewal agreement, the same as we had last year, just updated with new dates.
Ms. Kessler?
Make a motion to approve the agreement with API for senior center meal program.
Second.
Well, second, to approve the agreement with API. Discussion? Question?
Kessler?
Yes.
Kanega?
Yes.
Rorden?
Yes.
Binner?
Yes.
Parton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Item D, consideration of rock lining the lakes of the city on certain state controls of the city.
Good evening, mayor and council. In the council packet, we see several bids from contractors in reference to the rock lining of the two ponds at Southampton, North Timber Lane and Rigs Park Pond. The lining this time will consist of a six-foot wide band with a six-by-twelve rock. One thing we're changing is doing a twelve-inch rock. Hopefully during rainy seasons, it'll stay a little better than what the six-inch rock has done at Rigs Park. You may notice the Southampton Pond bid, Burkamp Construction was actually the lower bid, but they did not include any dirt work needed. That's gonna be needed at Southampton Pond. Ewer's did include that. So I can answer any questions. Otherwise, I'm requesting approval, except a bid from Ewer's in the amount of seventy-seven thousand and seventy-six, seventy dollars.
Ms. Crum?
I'll go ahead and make a motion that we approve the bids for the three lakes and approve bids for Ewer's Exhibition Incorporated at a total price of seventy-seven thousand and seventy dollars.
Well, second, to approve the bid of Ewer's excavation for rock-lined ponds? Discussion? Question?
Kessler?
Yes.
Kanega?
Yes.
Rorden?
Yes.
Binner?
Yes.
Parton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Would I, sorry, actually, please, purchase agreement for a new street sweeper?
So here you find three bids for a new street sweeper. We currently have an eighty-seven Elgin Pelican along with two parking lot sweepers. The Elgin, ancient, does not do a very good job. It's loud, it's dusty. The two parking lot sweepers are parking lot sweepers that we utilize on our roads. They don't do a great job either. I kinda tried to go as much detail I could in this memo. It's very evident with the Rabo Five, we did demo it twice. Just the amount of work it does compared to the new Elgins or the Timco, it was by far much better. It also has a pressure washer. We can pop all utilities with it. Also, street crews, when they're wide crack grinding, we can actually suck out the millings with the sweeper as well. So it saves a ton of staff hours. I can answer any questions first, if you have any.
My question on that last part, where you're talking about, I know it's gonna save a lot of time, but how much wear and tear would that put on that? I know it'll do it, but.
It's actually, it's a vacuum system, so we should be able, we demoed it, we were able to actually pull over the wide crack and it sucks it straight up. There's stainless steel metal inside of it. If we had to use the vacuum hose, then yes, the vacuum hose can get damaged over time, because it's made out of hard plastic. But literally, if we drive over it, it sucks it straight up to the vent, kind of like a vacuum sweeper. And the only thing with the Rabo Five, it has just an impeller at the top that gets it suction. Other than that, there's not very many moving parts compared to the Elgin and the Timco, where it's got chains, gears, conveyor belt, that are very costly to repair.
What kind of a guarantee does this have?
It's got a three-year warranty, bumper-to-bumper, includes everything. And the Pelican was one year.
When you were demoing, it was able to get very thick mud out of the streets themselves?
Yeah, I mean, it was by far, it is very evident that this was the best one for us, the Rabo Five.
Ms. Kessler?
So this new one, you're recommending the purchase that'll take the place of the two tenant sweepers? Correct. We'll keep the Elgin, just to have it, it doesn't have no benefit to auction off, being as old as it does. But the two parking lot sweepers, the one of them we got from Valley Center that was supposed to be used just for parks, we ended up using it in the streets. Right now, it's requiring about five thousand, and conveyor belt won't work right now anyway, so. Well, make a, make a motion that we go and approve the purchase of the Rabo Five from Red Newsful Equipment for two-hundred-and-eleven thousand dollars?
Second.
Well, second, to approve the purchase. Is there anything? Question? Question?
Kessler?
Yes.
Kanega?
Yes.
Rorden?
Yes.
Binner?
Yes.
Parton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Item D, consideration proposal to change hours of operation at the activity center.
Good evening, mayor and council. Now that we've settled into the new building, we're kinda looking at some changes and what we need to do to kinda accommodate citizens and members better. One of the things that I've looked at and had been considering was extending our hours. With these changes, we would be opening earlier, staying open a little later. Major changes that we will be changing are extending our winter hours, that we would be starting them a month sooner and then staying open, or having our winter hours a month later. So it would run basically September through May. I think this will really accommodate the membership better, and then we can kinda go forward and see what of the changes we need to make, getting feedback from people, so.
What about percentage of increases?
I have not looked at that in about a week and a half, but I know last I checked, we had sold about two-hundred memberships since, just since we moved in, which was June twelfth. So I know we, our numbers have increased and usage has been really good, so.
Ms. Crum?
Have you talked to any of your members now to find out what they think about longer hours, weekend, weekend, weekdays?
A lot of these hours were from comments we'd had in the past about staying open later and being open earlier. The earlier comment is one I've heard, and I use myself, for example, if I have to go workout in the morning, I need that hour. We have to, need to be in there by five o'clock and be out by six. So it's something, yes, from working out, talking to members, stuff that they told us in the past, also looking at other centers and what they've done. These hours are very similar to Derby. I don't like to use them in reference, but they have been there a little bit longer than me and have had reason to have certain hours. So I think these will work pretty good for us to start with.
Is that the kind of hours they have on the weekends?
What's that?
Is that the kind of hours they have on the weekends?
The hours I have not extended on the weekends yet. We're going to look at those. I have some other ideas in store for that, but I haven't got all our items finished to get that, to accommodate it yet. So I will possibly be doing something with the weekend, I just haven't done it yet.
Okay, so I think that would be something that would accommodate more people, the weekend hours for sure. Have we thought about putting a survey out like we do on the monkey survey, see if we could get some more information?
We will probably be putting one out with our members in-house, for those that are using it and starting there after we change them. So that's what I was gonna start with.
Okay, because I thought maybe if you go citywide, then maybe you'd get some of the people that might would be a member, wouldn't wanna be a member, but the hours just don't work.
Yeah, we can do that too.
Ms. Kessler?
Let's do much the same thing as a, as a person that I've partnered with.
I'd make a motion, same thing as a, as a person that I partnered did. I've received comments as far as that they wish it would stay open longer, even on Sundays. I know you're closed on Sundays, but I know some people would like to go there. So same thing as what she had said, you know, if we can get more feedback from a wider variety of people.
So the only thing, this would change it where we're only closed on Sundays, May, June, and July, I'm sorry, June, July, and August, where there tends to be a lot more activities going on outside the lake, baseball, softball, stuff like that. So like I said, it is something I'm going to look at. This is what we're kind of starting with staff-wise and getting things changed. And like I said, there's still a lot of stuff that we're working through. So this is what we're going to start with and kind of go from there. But I am taking that into consideration. I, I understand.
Even on Saturdays, I know we close at 1:00 on Saturdays. I know some people like to go there in the evening.
And I do have a, an idea for that, it's just not completely done yet. So I'm working on that. So trying to keep cost-wise and budget-wise for staff and what we have still in place and kind of keeping that in mind also.
Other comments? Mr. Crum?
I'd make comments, I was just going to make a motion to go ahead and accept, make a motion to accept the new hours as presented for the new half.
Second.
Most second to approve the change in hours at the activity center? Question? Question?
Kessler?
Yes.
Kanega?
Yes.
Burden?
Yes.
Binner?
Yes.
Parton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
I made consideration biz to paint the slide at the pool.
So this is something we were planning on looking at, completing this year. And then after we got our inspection from the Kansas Amusement Ride Act, most of them they recommended, because just due to some of the chipping we have on the inside of the pool, we haven't completed this since, I think, 2008. And then after checking references with other people that had their slide completed and who they had used, so I am recommending that we contract with the slide experts for $22,040. This would be completed by the end of September.
Mr. Kessler?
I think a part of the references we received was to go with the slide experts, even though, I don't know how you pronounce it, Astractor, was a lesson?
Yes, it was. So I actually had talked to three different people, three different towns. One was Lindsward, one's Garden City, and then another company, a place out of Texas. They had done work in the last year, so...
Well, if there's no other comment, I'll go and make a motion that we allow the recoding and repainting with the slide experts for $22,040.
Second.
Most second to approve the contract with slide experts for painting of the blue slide? Question? Question?
Kessler?
Yes.
Kanega?
Yes.
Burden?
Yes.
Binner?
Yes.
Parton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Would I have seven department reports, A and N, Bay Services, Will?
Ginger has some announcements she's going to make.
My first time, I'm so excited. Hello, Mayor and Council. Two things I wanted to tell you guys about today. First, we put a half-sheet flyer on the bench for you about Kids' Day at the Hayville Hometown Market. The first Saturday of every month is Kids' Day at the market. And this Saturday, September 2nd, as you can see in your flyer, Princess Belle will be visiting the market and she would love to meet your princes and princesses. I know the last Kids' Day, we had superheroes running around and princesses all dressed up and it was a lot of fun. She's got a little chip and Mrs. Potts and a little looking glass, just like Princess Belle, so it's really cool. They also offer horse rides with TJ, which anybody that has a young kid knows who TJ is, and face painting booth. 060 Rocks will host a rock decorating station again this week. And all of those kids events are free at the Hometown Market. While you're there, there are 24 paid vendors, which is a huge number for that space. So they've got fruits, veggies, homemade jams and jellies, baked treats for you and your dog, home decor items, crafts. Bash Brothers Barbecue is there selling their rubs and sauces and they are actually a local business. They have a kitchen in the industrial complex. And the market is open from 8:00 to 11:00 every Saturday until September 30th. So if you need more information about the market, you can contact Amy Arnold at 316-644-5811 or amy arnold11@gmail.com. The second thing that I have was for the senior center, they are looking for a kitchen manager. It's actually through the people that you approved the contract for earlier today, API. But they need someone who works 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., Monday through Friday, most of your holidays are off. Experience with food service is helpful. Some record-keeping is required. They are an equal opportunity employer. And if someone is interested in applying to that position, it's not a City of Hayville position, it's an API position, and they would call 316-681-4440. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ginger. Mr. Crum?
Is there anyone we can get that information to the school district on the kitchen manager? Because I bet they've had people that have retired that have been kitchen managers in the districts that might...
Sure.
Got one more announcement. You can see Zach has rejoined us at the table. Our new multimedia specialist started today and his name is Chris Worrell and he's in the room right now. He might step out here so you can see who he is.
I'm turning away. He's wrapping around a bunch of wires.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The only thing I have tonight is that the city offices will be closed on Monday, September the 4th.
Case? Case?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Our visiting officer tonight is Sergeant Clint Cartwright. He is currently assigned to our third shift as the shift supervisor, so say hi to him as you go by out there. Also wanted to remind everybody about tomorrow, which is warrant amnesty day here in Hayville. It'll be from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. tomorrow in the courtroom area over there. There is no regular court that day, but we are doing warrant amnesty day. So if anybody does have a warrant out there, you can, if you're not sure if you have a warrant, you can check our website, haysville-k s dot com and look there. And if you have one, try to come in and get it taken care of tomorrow. It'll cost you a little bit less money. One last thing is with Labor Day weekend coming up this weekend, we wanted to remind everybody not to drink and drive. There are additional officers, not only in Hayville, but other places around the state due to some KDOT funding grants that are out watching specifically for impaired drivers. So we just wanted to remind everybody, does need a driver, make sure you're not out there doing anything you shouldn't, and just be careful driving. Thanks.
Okay. Good work.
All right, our slurry still contractor moved out of town last week, so hooray for that. I think our road closures, didn't have too many complaints about, so I think they worked out pretty well. Update on Alexander and Hillcrest Road Project. The contractor will be opening up Hillcrest in the south side of Alexander tomorrow morning and they'll be on the north side of Alexander pouring that before lunch and it should open by the end of the week 100%. Also, as Janie noted, Labor Day Monday, for sewer or water emergencies, call Hayville Dispatch, 529-5912 for any water or sewer emergencies. Also today, the Rigs Park Concrete Border was poured today on the north playground over there. We're expecting the slide to arrive September 11th. In the meantime, Public Works will be doing some grading and cleanup of that area after the construction. Also Orchard Acres Dirt Project, 10 will be scheduled for September 6th. We have a meeting tomorrow on some gas line relocation that we're trying to get squared away pretty quickly. We'll provide updates as we get those on that.
Mr. Crum, question?
I should ask earlier, Tony, on the rock lining for the lakes, when do they think they may be getting on that?
He told me today, as soon as he gets the go-ahead, so I'd say about a week.
Okay. Thank you.
Sergeant?
registration for fall programs, we have cheerleading and then tiny-tot soccer. We also have a new series of fall into fitness classes. These are kind of a boot camp, get in shape classes that are twice a week. There's ones for adults and youth and they coincide, so adult can take one, the kids can take the other. So Friday, September 22nd, we're having an SOS Day that will be the first Schools Out Day School of the Year. So we'll be offering that at the activity center and then we will be closed on Labor Day. So ahead?
How many appointments? We have none. Item nine, off agenda, citizens to be hurt, we have none. Item 10, execution, we have none. Item 11, bills we pay, a bill we pay till last half of August. Mr. President?
I'd make a motion to pay the last half of August bills.
Second.
Most second to pay the last half of August bills? Discussion? Question?
Kessler?
Yes.
Kanega?
Yes.
Burden?
Yes.
Binner?
Yes.
Parton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Item 12, consent agenda, we have nothing. Item 13, council items, a council concern. Any concerns, council? Saying that, we'll go to item D, which is council action request updates.
All right, and regards to 354 Turf Hole, there's been no change to the previous update. You may see on the way home, the street department is out cracksill on the west grain right now in the evenings. 720 Hemp Hill, property owner and the tenant have been verbally notified.